On this chilly evening, it's my pleasure to give you a very warm City of Prince George welcome to the oath of office ceremony for our incoming mayor and council. Thank you all very much for joining us this evening. This is a time for celebration. We have family and friends here. We'll have to do some city business with the new council, but it really is a time of celebration. Given that, a city has arranged for a professional photographer to attend. There's so many friends and family here that I'm sure are looking forward to capturing the moment for the oaths of office. I've been asked to tell you that we will have a photographer here that will capture every member of council taking their oath of office. So please don't feel the need to stand up and take those pictures. We will share those with all members of council after the inaugural meeting. I'd like to begin by respectfully acknowledging the unceded ancestral lands of the Clayton Tenet, on whose land we live, work, and play. I want to recognize and thank Chief Dolan Logan and councillor Seymour and councillor Gibbs for being here tonight. Thank you. I want to also recognize Himalaya Shirley Bond, Art Kane, and Lara Beckett, Chair and Vice Chair of the Regional District Board respectively, as well as City Councillor Murray Kraus. And I want to thank you all for being here this evening. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please rise as I welcome Melanie Nichol to lead us in the singing of her national anthem. Please be seated. Thank you very much, Melanie, for that beautiful rendition of our national anthem. Really appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief Logan to come forward to say a few words of welcome. Please, Chief Logan.
Hadi.
Hadi.
Oh, everybody needs darling. So I want to say congratulations to each and every one of you, and it is my pleasure, on behalf of our elders, members, chief and council administration, to welcome everyone here to our unceded territory. Our nation, the Clayton-Snead First Nation, enjoys a very special relationship with the city, and it has for over the past 20 years or more, actually. And I would like to take this moment here to thank Lynn Hall. He's been a very strong friendship with us, and Shirley Bond, and Regional District, and the councillors, and the exploration place. And this has been, our relationship is very unique because it's truth and reconciliation before we even had truth and reconciliation. And it's been a very good relationship, and it's very unique for, I would have to say, for Canada. I've talked to other First Nations and they don't have this. And new mayor-elect Yu, we want to continue on with our relationship and help build on it, and I'm pretty sure we can. And we... So long before the word reconciliation became popular, we were already practicing it here in Prince George and throughout our territory. Why? Because our ancestors have welcomed outsiders to our territory for thousands of years, before anyone thought to build railroads between Edmonton and Prince George. Prior to that, our ancestors managed our unceded lands to feed our families, provide shelter and clothing, and all the things that have sustained us for over 90,000 years in this area. So working together with organizations and individuals is nothing new to us. This is a gathering place, and this is where we all come together and we welcome everyone. This morning, we opened our new health center, and I would like to thank Mr. Mayor Yu and the Regional District and First Nations Health, everyone that came out to celebrate with our opening and altar. And so I wanted to congratulate everyone again, and the only thing I ask is that we continue to build our relationship, and I hope you have a very successful time here as, oh, elections. Elections are always... So, Mrs. Chalhia, thank you all for inviting us, and congratulations.
Thank you very much, Chief Logan. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce the Honorable Judge Susan Mangaring to take the oaths of office. Just a few words about Judge Mangaring. Judge Susan Mangaring was appointed a judge of the provincial court in January 2017. In that capacity, she presides over criminal, family, and small claims actions. Prior to her appointment, Judge Mangaring was a prosecutor with the provincial Crown Council Office in Prince George for 15 years. She's proud to call Prince George home for the past 20 years, and she says it's an honor to welcome Prince George's new mayor and city council. Please join me in giving a warm welcome to the Honorable Judge Susan Mangaring.
Thank you. I was surprised to hear that I might give a few words of advice or guidance. I learned that about two minutes ago. We, of course, all recognize the importance of the democratic process, and I, like everybody in Prince George, appreciate the willingness of people such as yourselves to step forward to represent the community in the important work that you'll be called upon to conduct and participate in during your term of office. So, good luck, and we look forward to watching all of you in action over the next four years. So we will start with Mayor-elect Simon Yu, if he would like to step forward. I'll get you to repeat after me, and then after that, we're going to sign this copy.
Okay.
All right. I, Simon Yu, do solemnly affirm that...
I, Simon Yu, do solemnly affirm that...
I am qualified to hold the office of mayor for the City of Prince George to which I have been elected.
I'm qualified to hold the office of mayor for the City of Prince George to which I have been elected.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I have complied with the provincials, provinces of the Local Government Act in relationship to election to this office.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will abide by all rules related to conflict of interest under the community charter.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be accountable for the decision I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be respectful of others.
I will be respectful of the others.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
Can you so affirm?
Thank you.
All right. You can sign now. And you've read the council code of conduct member statement?
Yes, I have. Thank you.
You got to keep the pen.
Judge Mangaring, if we could please ask you to assist with putting the oath or the chain of office on Mayor Yu, please.
All right. Mr. Bennett. All right, so again, I'll get you to repeat after me.
I, Timothy Tim Bennett, do solemnly affirm that...
I, Timothy Tim Bennett, do solemnly affirm that...
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I have been elected.
I'm qualified to hold the office for councillor of the City of Prince George to which I've been elected.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I have complied with provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be respectful of others.
I will be respectful of others.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
I'll get you to sign now. And you've read the council code of conduct member statement?
I have.
Congratulations.
Your Honor.
I, Garth Frisell, do solemnly affirm that...
I, Garth Frisell, do solemnly affirm that...
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I've been elected.
I'm qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I've been elected.
I just want to remember very much.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act... ...in relation to this office.
I will abide by all rules related to conflict of interest under the community charter.
I will abide by all rules related to conflict of interest under the community charter.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be respectful of others.
I will be respectful of others.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
And you've read the council code of conduct member statement?
I have.
And that is your pen. Thank you.
I, Getrude Trudy Claussen, do solemnly affirm that...
I, Getrude Claussen, Getrude Trudy Claussen, do solemnly affirm that...
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I've been elected.
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I have been elected.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be respectful of others.
I will be respectful of others.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
And you've read the council code of conduct member statement?
I have.
I, Ron Pallillo, do solemnly affirm that...
I, Ron Pallillo, do solemnly affirm that...
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I've been elected.
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I've been elected.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my elections to this office.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will abide by all rules related to the conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be respectful of others.
I will be respectful of others.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
Thank you. And you've read the council code of conduct member statement?
I have bedtime reading.
Mr. Pallillo?
Oh!
No, you can keep the...
Oh, that's right.
I was going to do that.
It's all right.
Just want to make it more good. So that you can come after.
I, Corey Ramsey, do solemnly affirm that...
I, Corey Ramsey, do solemnly affirm that...
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I've been elected.
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I have been elected.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be respectful of others.
I will be respectful of others.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
And you've read the council code of conduct?
I have.
I, Kyle Sampson, do solemnly affirm that...
I, Kyle Sampson, do solemnly affirm that...
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I've been elected.
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I've been elected.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be respectful of others.
I will be respectful of others.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
And you've read the council code of conduct?
I have.
I, Susan Scott, do solemnly affirm that...
I, Susan Scott, do solemnly affirm that...
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I've been elected.
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I have been elected.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be respectful of others.
I will be respectful of others.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
And I will perform my duties in accord, of my office in accordance with the law.
Have you read the council code of conduct?
Yes, I have.
I, Brian Skaken, do solemnly affirm that...
I, Brian Skaken, do solemnly affirm that...
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I've been elected.
I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Prince George to which I have been elected.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I have complied with the provisions of the Local Government Act in relation to my election to this office.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will abide by all rules related to conflicts of interest under the community charter.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will carry out my duties with integrity.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be accountable for the decisions that I make and the actions that I take in the course of my duties.
I will be respectful of others.
I will be respectful of others.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
I will demonstrate leadership and collaboration.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
And I will perform the duties of my office in accordance with the law.
Is it your first?
Yes. And you've reviewed the council code of conduct?
Yes, I have.
Thank you very much, Judge Mangaring. I really appreciate you coming out this evening. Before we move on to the mayor's inaugural address, on behalf of entire city administration, please join me in a warm congratulations to your new mayor and council.
Good evening. Bonjour. 你好. It is an extreme honor and privilege to be seated here before you tonight. To my council colleague, dignitary, special guests, friends, and my dear family here and those who are watching elsewhere in Canada, England, Hong Kong, I'm deeply humbled by your support, and I'm truly grateful to be surrounded by you. To begin, I would like to acknowledge that we are gathering here tonight on the unceded ancestral land of Clayton Tenet. To Chief Dolan Logan and her council, we value your partnership, your friendship, and collaboration. Choose and reconciliation with meaningful engagement will be at the forefront of all city matters. This is my solemn promise to you. To my fellow candidates in 2022 city elections, I offer my sincere appreciation of your courage in putting your name on a ballot to exercise your democratic rights. In particular, I would like to thank Mayor candidate Terry McConkey for your eight years of dedicated service to this community as a member of council. To outgoing Mayor Lynn Hall, your over 20 years of public service, your dedication to our city has been remarkable. Thank you for your leadership, and I wish you health and happiness in your journeys ahead. I would also like to acknowledge decades of genuine efforts, former councillor Frank Everett and Murray Kraus. Gentlemen, we have witnessed your work tirelessly. On behalf of our citizens, you will be missed. Your contribution are much appreciated. Thank you, Murray. To our city staff led by Walt, we appreciate and recognize the work you all do day in, day out to help better our community and support council's decision. Thank you. Nearly 50 years ago, I arrived in Prince George, carried only two suitcases. Prince George took me in, and because of this welcoming community, I have been blessed in building a life, a career, and a beautiful big family. I have always believed that I owe this great city everything. As an immigrant who spoke little English when I arrived in Canada, I can imagine the gratitude. You can imagine the gratitude I feel right now, seated here before you as our first, city's first, and our province's very first. First-generation Asian mayor. First generation Asian mayor, yes, history is being made here tonight. But this is not my accomplishment, this is the accomplishment of you. The people of Prince George, as it signifies we as a community that is strong through diversity and supportive of progress, progressive change, I'm truly humbled, proud, and confident in our people here. Growing up here, our family dinner conversation often centered around the great potential of our city to become the global northern capital. After all these years, I continue to believe wholeheartedly our city is destined to be great city, to be ranked amongst the very best in the world. But a vision cannot be achieved without collaboration, partnership, and hard work. Please take a moment and look around. You will see many friends, partners, stakeholders, and dignitaries from senior levels of government. Thank you all for coming tonight. These individuals all play such an important role in the success and the development of our community. The work you do is admirable. Your efforts are essential to the foundation of Prince George. What you do day in, day out plays a vital role in the city's current success and help us work towards a better tomorrow. We must listen to you, the subject matter experts and those with lived experience right here in our own backyard. Together, we will do it. We can do it. Together, we will begin to assess many of the key opportunities and challenges facing our community. Together, we will collaborate to develop a multi-generational plan for our city, one that guides us today and carefully consider our children, grandchildren, and future generations to come. Together, an exciting business investment environment will emerge in our community. It is time to roll up the red tape and to roll out the red carpet. Together, we as a community will begin to build a long-term infrastructural capital plan, a plan that not only respects existing taxpayers' immediate priority but also evaluates the long-term growth potential of our city. But unlike any journey, we too face big challenges. Mental health, drug addiction are severely damaging the lives of our brothers, sisters. We need innovative action and we need it now. Together, through partnership, collaboration, leadership, practical solutions, and empathy, we will address the current widespread addiction, mental health, and homeless crisis. We know these challenges require strong collaboration with elected representatives and public servants in Victoria and in Ottawa. Our pledge that we will be relentless in our advocacy efforts to deliver lasting results to our community. We have heard loud and clear, trust and transparency need to be restored with our citizens. Everyone in this room, watch at home, have heard about the need to greater transparency and accountability. This was very evident throughout the campaign trail, and this starts and ends with city council. We are committed to enhancing the council's code of conduct to provide greater assurance to our citizens. The city of Prince George under Mayor Yu and the council leadership will be accessible, accountable, and action-oriented. Together, we commit to improve affordability and transparency by carefully managing expenditures and taxation, ensure our citizens are always on top of mind. However, this all cannot be achieved without the team members around this table here. My family has spent over thirty years as a team sport ambassadors for this city and continue to do so today. Team sport is an integral part and life of my children and grandchildren. We all know the value of teamwork, supportive of one another, and offering up your individual strengths to build on a team's greater success. Council's diversity will not only make us a stronger team but also a more resilient and inclusive city. And what a great team we have here. Council Skaken, commitment to transparency and accountability. Council Simpson, its vision for vibrant business, art, and tourism. Council Fezal, its dedication to intergovernmental issues and practical climate action solutions. Council Ramsey, your compassion for mental health, addiction, and affordable housing. Council Polio, your passion for equal employment opportunity for all our citizens and your enthusiasm for community sports and recreation. Council Claston, your focus and experience on economic development and fiscal responsibilities. Council Bennett, your devotion to family, youth, and children. And Council Scott, your advocacy for our community's senior population and encouragement for business development. Together, with the support of so many here, our collective passion will help guide our community. We vow to be your voice and represent you with integrity, respect, and empathy. We intend here to govern with grace and dignity. We will serve this city with a great enthusiasm in the best interests of our citizens. I have never felt so much more optimism for this community than I'm doing now. We are at the crossroad and the vast potential of Prince George lay before us. We vow it to our community, we owe it to our community, to those who have gone before us. I miss you, Dad. To our children and to our grandchildren, to seize every opportunity available to help Prince George reach its new heights as a global northern capital. I'm sitting here tonight because the people of Prince George have entrusted me as a positive of change. My goal is simple, get things done, and together we will get things done. I will accept nothing less. You can do it. In closing, the privilege to serve you as your mayor is an extreme honour. Thank you for instilling your trust in both myself and my council colleagues. We will not let you down. Thank you. Now, I would like to invite my fellow council colleagues to provide their remarks. Council Skaken?
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor Yu, and yes, it's a historical election. So glad that we have you in this chair there and taking leadership. What a group of people. The public has spoken and now it's time to show the community what we're made of. You know, many of us ran on similarly yet different things in the campaign, from transparency, accountability, the unhoused, and a number of other issues, but everybody in this chamber and in the audience cares about the community. We have our QP 399, 1048 firefighters, and the RCMP that we're going to continue to work closely with in the next four years, and we value their service. And I also think that if you're doing your job as a councillor, you're going to ruffle some feathers, you're going to lose a little bit of sleep, you're going to get wrapped up in some things, and that's part of the job. And for me, anyways, flying under the radar is not an option. And we also need to show compassion, empathy, and understanding when we're dealing with a number of the sensitive issues that come to council. For me, it's an emotional time. It's my last term and I first ran in 1999. I got elected in 2002. I've served with a number of different mayors and it's an honour to serve with you in this term, Mayor Yu. My council colleagues, the incumbents that worked hard to get back in, and the new folks around the table have brought a lot of experience and different dynamics, and I think we're going to work really good as a group together. I'm looking forward to this next term. There's a lot of work to do. You know, we're going to hit the ground running. The learning curve is steep, but like I said, the folks that have been elected here, I think know enough already to, you know, fill the shoes of the previous councillors. So again, and I just wanted to thank my family, my wife, mom, and my sister Cindy and my son Jake, because you can't do this job without your family. There's just, there's no doubt. And it can be taxing and hard on you, but you know, if you got the support of your family, that is half the battle. So again, Mayor Yu, congratulations, and congratulations to everybody that was elected. Look forward to working with the administration and to the media in the back of the room. They're the ones that are going to report on us. They're the ones that are going to hold us accountable, so don't let us off the hook. Anyways, have a good night. Thank you.
Council Simpson?
Thanks, Your Worship. And yeah, ditto to Council Skaken. This campaign, there was a lot of similar themes coming out of a lot of different candidates, different opinions, different viewpoints, and I'm excited with the colleagues that I get to work with around this table. I think we bring differing opinions. There will be good debate, and at the end of the day, we're all here for Prince George, making it the best community it can be, and I'm excited to work with this team. I just, I'll keep it quick. I want to say thanks to city staff. I know the transition period between councils and getting into a new council can be challenging, and we've been very well taken care of getting, making sure everybody around the table's been treated equally with respect to getting information out and getting us introduced into this role again. This is a new council. Some of us have been fortunate enough to be here before, but we're all here as a new council working together, so I'm looking forward to that. To my colleagues, we got to get right down to work, as Mayor Yu has said, and Mayor Yu, looking forward to working under your leadership. I think it's going to be a great turn in your term, in your mayoral's address for the beginning of this term, I think sums it up. We're going to work hard and we can do it. I got a lot of great friends and family. As Council Skaken said, you can't do this job without family and friends and the support of countless dear friends of mine. I'm eternally grateful, and my family, they couldn't come up today. Highways were a bit rough, but I know they're watching, so thank you very much to my family and to my partner Nicole. Very grateful for the support that they've shown over the last, well, little while with the election, and I know that I'm going to rely on them over the next four years as well. So thank you very much and looking forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Yu. And thank you to my family. Sue, Ethan, Yohan, and Linus are all here. Thank you to all our friends, and thank you to the residents of our city and beyond. And as Counselor Skaken said, it's so important to have family with you every step of the way. So thank you to our family, thank you to our friends. Mayor Yu, you began by recommitting us on our path towards reconciliation. What a great way to start. I really appreciated the inspiring speech you gave, because the beginning of the story is where the inspiration comes from. You know in your soul at the beginning that there's possibility, because the future can still be shaped and it can be built. We know that the next four years is going to be a mix of hard things, of routine things, and then some really sublime things. So first, with the benefit of experience, I can safely forecast that the term ahead will have hard issues that we can't foresee yet. We're going to be tested for our intellect, our courage, our vision, our sincerity, and yes, as with every government everywhere, we will inevitably face hard times. Second, council will face a lot of routine issues, minutes, agendas, minor variance for the heights of a neighbor's shed, these kinds of things are workaday things. But the third piece, we also have the opportunity to build great things, and I like what you said in your speech. We get to fix broken policies and we get to build this city closer to its amazing potential. We can build great things when we're all in this together. I went searching for a quote, spent a lot of time reading through books, and thirty years ago, Kim Campbell, another trailblazer, Canada's first woman prime minister, said, "Don't let anyone tell you Canada's best years are behind us." Well, that goes for this city today. We have a past and a present, but this is a city with a bright future. And on with a historically diverse, equitable, and inclusive team, young and old, men and women, urban and rural, I'm really excited about the possibilities we have in this future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Ramsey?
Thank you, Your Worship, and I first and foremost just want to say it is an absolute privilege to serve our community for a second term on council. I want to say just my deep thanks to residents, the electors, everyone who got out and voted, as well as people who might not have had the chance for exercising their democratic right. I am just so appreciative for everyone who got out. I know we'll see it in the report, but an extra 2,000 voters is a significant increase in turnout, in my opinion, so I just want to say kudos to our residents. I want to say congratulations and thank you to my colleagues, my new colleagues, some old, some new, for putting their names forward. I have such deep respect for the individuals that sit around this table, because everyone brings one thing to this table, and that is a deep love and passion for Prince George and our community. We're all here to make it better and help guide in the leadership of our community. So I am appreciative for another term to work with some new and old faces. I also want to thank just my dear ones who are in the gallery today, Kevin, Lisa, and Kelly. Thank you so much for your support and love. I absolutely could not have done this without you and my family from afar as well. And finally, I just want to say thank you to staff for all the work you do. It's not just council that sits around this table with a passion for Prince George, it's our amazing staff as well that do really a huge amount of work to make our city the best it can be. So I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you to everyone. I'm looking forward to serving for another term.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Your Worship. It's a pleasure to say that to you.
Thank you.
And I too am full of gratitude this evening. I think first of all of my husband, my family, my friends, supporters, team, some of whom are here this evening, some who are watching online and so on. I am humbled, humbled to be returning to this chamber for a third time. I know that there is much work to do, and I know throughout the course of this election, we all heard much from the citizens of Prince George from every corner, and those voices will not be stopped. You have to keep talking to us. You have to hopefully not yell at us, but keep talking to us and tell us what matters to you. I can be pretty good at what I do, but I can't actually read the mind of everybody in the city. So I really hope that people will continue that line of communication. I am mindful this evening that it's Veterans Week, and I reach out to the Legion Branch 43, and I look forward to seeing you all on Friday at Remembrance Day. And a big shout out to the Prince George Council of Seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Bennett?
Thank you very much, Your Worship, and like my colleagues, just incredibly humbled to be given the opportunity to serve our community in a new capacity for the next four years. I too just want to take a moment to thank my wife Carly, my four young ones who should hopefully all be in bed by this point, as well as my parents, family, friends, for all their support, and sorry in advance for the missed dinners and canceled plans, because we are going to have a really incredible and busy four years ahead of us. I want to also just again thank the community, all of our partners and stakeholders and rights holders for the feedback and conversation over the last few months, especially during the election campaign and since. And you know, we heard loud and clear from the community that they're wanting us to get to work right away, and I think, you know, as we walk in today and complaining about how cold it is, is also a really good reminder that as we get into winter, some of our communities most vulnerable need our support as well. So it's going to be important that we get to work and support all members of our community. So with that, just a huge thank you to the community for this great honour and privilege, and it's a responsibility I take incredibly seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Polio?
Well, thank you, Your Worship. I was really inspired by your speech tonight and I think you set a fantastic tone for the next four years. I'd like to congratulate, of course, all my council colleagues and you, Mayor Yu. I'm really excited to work alongside you to really make a difference and that's why we're all here. I'd like to thank my family, my daughters Sophia and Lauren, and my friends Kevin and Costina who are here, and my family from afar. They're a big reason why I'm here today. I also like to thank my friends who were so supportive, especially in the campaign, your messages and your texts and your emails and your phone calls and your hugs and your encouragement. It was tremendous and I'm really humbled. To the residents of Prince George, I commit to be respectful, to listen, to consult, to collaborate, build relationships, be accessible and be accountable. I know this is a very challenging, important job and I take it very seriously and I will approach it with passion and honesty and humility and integrity. When I arrived here almost 30 years ago, I quickly discovered what a special place Prince George is. It's kind, it's caring, it's friendly, compassionate. We have a can-do attitude. We have a true volunteer heart and we know Prince George is a great place to live, work, raise a family and play. We have a bright future and I know together with this council and you together, we can build a positive, inclusive and thriving Prince George and I look forward to the next four years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last but not least, councillor Claussen?
Thank you, Mayor Yu. I'm very excited to be here. I mean, this is the first time I'm holding public office, so I'm probably the newest newbie. I want to begin by thanking my mum and my dad, who has passed away, but for being parents who dared to stand up to their convictions despite being in a community that didn't really support that. And they did and they did it quietly and they did it with strength. And sometimes you don't appreciate that until you're much older. I mean, older people will know this, right? And you just don't appreciate it as a child and I really want to thank them. And of course, I want to thank my husband, who you may not see very much around, but do know that he is my rock. He is my better half, truly. And he has shown me that together he is willing to make the sacrifices required to live a life of integrity. And of course, my six children. Children teach you that accountability begins at home. And when you have six adult children, you get a lot of that and I thank them for it. And I'm very proud of all of them. And I also want to thank many of my supporters, many of them who've never been involved in politics. I know the first time that I ran for school district 57, I didn't like, I just was like, who's going to vote for me? Because none of the people that I know have ever ran for public office. So I want to honour that support that I've got from that community, because it's been a learning curve. It really is a learning curve to run for public office and also to support someone who is running for public office, because you really have no idea. And I want to take, and I'm so encouraged by everything that I've heard and especially what you've said, Mayor Yu, because I think we have an opportunity here to restore pride, not only in the word politician or the profession of politician, but also in our city. I began my campaign with a passion that I've long held and worked on and volunteered for in various capacities about developing our area, our region, to become a true northern capital. And now, Mayor Yu, you've upped the ante and said we should become a global northern capital. And I really, and I think, I think we have Gordon Duke here from the airport. Our airport is an international airport or has that capacity. And so, and all around us, we have so many natural resources, so many opportunities for tourism, for mining, for exploration, for just so much opportunity around us. And I'm really excited, because I think that is something that I really feel that we are ready for, that we are ready for. And I really think that we are, the best days for Prince George are yet to come. And darned it all, if we just die fighting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we, thank you very much for all the remarks. That was incredible. So we've got to start our regular meeting. Well, once again, we respectfully acknowledge and see this ancestral lands of a clean today. On those land, we live, work and play. And as a councillor, all the agendas in front of you.
Move the motion, councillor.
Thank you. All in favour? Oops, adopt. Thank you. And tonight, we first like to invite Ms Connelly, the corporate officer and manager of Legislative Services, to give us the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. This report of the 2022 general local election results is submitted to council in accordance with section 158 of the Local Government Act. The declaration of official election results was made on October 17th, 2022 and is attached to this report. There is also a detailed ballot account, which details the reports of ballots distributed and accepted at the various voting locations and opportunities. I'd be pleased to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
And I need a move. Move. Need a second there?
Sorry.
Oh, in favour? Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Councillor Ramsey, you want to see something?
Oh, thank you, Your Worship. Just a question through to Ms Connelly regarding the report on the ballot account. And I'm just curious, the number of ballots not accounted for, if you could maybe go into a little bit of detail about that?
Sure, Your Worship, through to councillor Ramsey. So there are various reasons that account for ballots being unaccounted for. Certainly in the case of mail ballots being a little bit higher in numbers, that those are ballots that were not returned. So they were distributed to electors and were not accounted for in the sense that they were not received before the deadline and perhaps are still being held or have been shredded. And at other voting locations, they can be ballots that perhaps maybe have been taken with the elector or just simply unaccounted for in the record of ballot accounting at that voting location.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions? All in favour to adopt the result? Favour? Carry. That's the next item. Again, I'd like to invite Ms Connelly to introduce the meeting schedule for this remainder year of 2022 and 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. The report before council requests consideration to amend the 2022 council meeting calendar to change the first regular meeting in November from November 21st to November 28th. Further, administration recommends that a committee of the whole meeting be established for Wednesday, December 14th, to allow council the opportunity to receive information regarding the Police Services Review. The 2023 council meeting calendar has also been prepared in accordance with the requirements of the Community Charter and the City's Council Procedure Bylaw. The proposed calendar includes dates of the annual conferences and conventions for the North Central Local Government Association, Union of British Columbia Municipalities and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. Following council's approval of the council meeting calendar for 2023, public notice of this schedule will be made available. I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion to recommend it number one. Second there? All in favour? Carry. Recommendation number two, I need a mover. Second, by councillor Bennett. Any questions? No? All in favour? Thank you. This is pretty easy. So far. Well, the item number three is we need to appoint the acting mayors for 2022 to 2026 and council term. And again, I invite Ms Connelly to introduce the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Pursuant to the Community Charter and the City of Prince George Council Procedures Bylaw, council must designate councillors to serve on a monthly rotating basis as a member responsible for acting in place of the mayor when the mayor is absent or unable to act. Consistent with past practice, the proposed acting mayor schedule from November of this year through to October 2026 has been prepared in alphabetical order based on the councillor's surname. I'd be pleased to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Any question?
Move recommendation.
Second. All in favour? Carry. Thank you. So we move to the, item number four, appointment of municipal directors to regional district of a Fraser Ford George Board. Again, I would like to introduce Ms Connelly to give us the report and procedure. Thank you.
Thank you. Pursuant to the Local Government Act, council is entitled to appoint four members of council to act as municipal directors on the Regional District of Fraser Ford George Board of Directors. The total voting strength of the four municipal directors is 20 votes, which is equally distributed amongst the positions. The Council Procedures Bylaw provides that council shall appoint the mayor to serve as one of the four municipal directors on the Regional District of Fraser Ford George Board. The Council Procedure Bylaw states that any two members of council may nominate any councillor to serve as one of the three remaining municipal directors. If more than three councillors are nominated, then council must vote by ballot to appoint these three municipal directors. Council must also appoint councillors as alternate municipal directors to take the place of an absent municipal director at the regional district board meeting. In this regard, the Council Procedure Bylaw sets up the following system to determine which alternate director, municipal director, is to act in place of any absent director. So the first is a councillor that's appointed as the floating primary alternate municipal director and they may take the place of any absent municipal director. And second, each of the four remaining councillors are then appointed in rotating alphabetical order as secondary alternate directors. I'd be pleased to answer any questions council may have.
So do I need a motion to get me onto the board there?
I assume. Second.
Thank you. Any objection?
For it to vote.
Thank you. I guess I'm on the board, regional district. Thank you, Art. So now we need a nomination on to the floor, right?
Yes, Your Worship.
Yeah. So the floor is open, you know, any?
Check the queue.
Oh.
You pushed the button.
This is Mr Bennett. You first.
I took the top. I had one job. Thank you, Your Worship. I'll nominate councillor Claussen.
Thank you. Any second there?
Second.
So we have one nomination on the floor. Congratulations. Judy, so any? Next one, councillor Scott.
Thank you, Your Worship. Whoops. There we go, maybe. I would like to nominate councillor Ramsey.
Councillor Ramsey. Second there? Councillor Ramsey's on the ballot then.
I accept the nomination.
Thank you. And councillor Frizzle?
I nominate councillor Scott.
Any second there? Tao, second motion. So Brian's on the ballot. You accept the nomination?
Councillor Scott.
Councillor Scott, right?
He nominated councillor Scott.
You nominated councillor Scott. Okay. And a second there? You got second, okay? Would you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have a... Councillor Skaken?
I'd like to nominate councillor Sampson.
Second there? Any second?
Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, so we have the one, two. Councillor Polio?
I'll nominate councillor Skaken.
Second.
Second councillor Sampson? Would you accept the nomination? Okay, so we have everybody nominated and everybody accept the nomination. So we've got to go to vote, correct?
Anybody else?
Any more nominations? Okay, so we've done our nomination. Please distribute the ballots, please.
This one?
If you press it, it goes to that person. So then if you clear queue, but if you press their name, it turns them.
Okay. Oh, I got to vote too? Four, right?
So, Your Worship, just to clarify the procedure, members of council have received ballots and we've recorded councillors Claussen, Ramsey, Scott, Sampson and Skaken as being the nominees. It would be in order for members of council to vote for three of those nominees. And our staff will then collect and tally the ballots, Your Worship.
Thank you. Okay, three. Thank you. I wonder if we can provide some music during the...
Do you need that?
Huh? I would love to... Is that allowed during this counting, which...
We could amend the council procedure bylaw if you wish.
Well, since we have a... Is this going to take for a while and, no? Oh, councillor Scott.
Thank you. I would, I think we'd be remiss, while we have a few moments, if we didn't recognise the various organisations that have joined us this evening.
Yes.
The library.
Library.
Wave. Tourism.
Yep. Nice call.
Who else?
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber.
Chamber.
Airport.
Hey.
Yep. Of course, here, yeah.
Our RCMP superintendent.
Thank you for coming. And we have a number of religious organisations here with us as well. Thank you for coming. For the job.
Our Freedom of the City, the Rocky Mountain Rangers.
Thank you.
And I think I saw an email from fire chief Warner that due to a structure fire, he was unable to be here. So the fire department was supposed to be represented as well.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. We have a result?
Your Worship, we do. So the ballots have been counted and the three council members voted to serve as municipal directors are councillor Sampson, councillor Ramsey and councillor Skaken. There was a tie vote.
Thank you. So now we need an alternate.
Yeah, so it would be in order, Your Worship, to consider recommendation number two and appoint those three members as municipal directors.
Okay.
I would those three be appointed?
Thank you. Second there? All in favour? Art, you got your... You got the... Art, you've got the four board member coming. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you, worship. So the two members of council, there was a tie between Counselor Claussen and Counselor Scott. And so a second set of ballots will be distributed.
Thank you.
Is that right? For the board, yeah.
Congratulations, by the way. Thank you. So just one, so this one. The silence is deadly.
Doesn't happen too often here.
Yeah. This is not usual.
It's not too common that it's silent.
Okay, thank you. Gosh, I was starting wondering.
So, your worship, I should explain, out of the members of council that were appearing on the ballot as accepting nominations, the top three in terms of tally votes secure the municipal director position. The fourth is for the floating alternate. And there is a diagram that we can put up on the agenda just to show the structure for members of the public and for council. So this specific ballot was for the primary floating alternate. And the successful ballots tallied and the most votes goes to Counselor Scott.
Thank you. Congratulations. I think this is the extent of the agenda for tonight.
So, your worship, there is a motion there at number three to appoint as a floating primary alternate municipal director, Counselor Scott.
Oh, yes. Move, second. Counselor Ramsey, all in favor? I need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah.
One more? Second, okay.
I moved four.
Fourth, okay. So we've got to do this individually.
Yeah, so now we're exploring the rest of the alternates, so.
Thank you.
You second, Susan moved I second.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn the regular meeting? All in favor?
Yes.
Wow, first meeting. That's good. Thank you.